Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting of Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. As you can see, we're doing, we're all doing this via Zoom tonight. Due to a scheduling conflict with WCAT, so we're all home tonight doing this via Zoom with the intention of being back in the studio at a future meeting. I did want to mention that we are, the, the school committee just came out of an executive session. And we have already made a motion to, to come back into our regular meeting. And so we will go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. WCAT, are you going to put the flag up on the screen or should we just?
Yes, ma'am, I'll get the flag going in just a moment.
Awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, thanks for standing up. I never know whether I should stand up or what I should do. So I feel like I should have probably done that. So next I'm going to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum. High quality instruction and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Do we have anybody here for public comment? We did not get any emails ahead of time, but I do want to open it up. Looks like we're okay. I don't see anybody. So I'm going to go ahead and proceed. It looks like we've got lots of student advisors here. So I see Sophia and Maggie and Logan and Samantha. Is that, I think, I feel like that's everybody. Who's going first tonight?
I can start.
Okay.
Okay, so with it being May, there is a lot of things going on, just, you know, the nature of the year ending. And specifically on the academic sides of things. Our AP test started, I want to say, last week, or there might have been one the week before, and they should end on Friday. Remote MCAS for grade 10 students will end tomorrow. Science MCAS will take place in early June. And last night was the awards night for seniors and some junior award winners.
Thanks, Logan. I saw you in those award slides. Congratulations. Who's next?
That would be me. So just for, you know, other school news. For seniors, last day of school is this Friday. So senior activities will take place all next week, you know, starting with the car parade on Tuesday, which starts at 3:30 at the high school and will follow the same route as last year, which will be posted soon. And, you know, seniors would love it if, you know, families, you know, line the street, you know, around town to support them. Also, the class of 2024 is holding a fundraiser at Fuddruckers in Reading this Thursday, May 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And I'll let Sophie take it from here.
Yeah, I can take it from here. So the class of 2022 is also holding a fundraiser this Thursday, May 27th. And it will be located at Sox Ice Cream in Saugus. And it's from noon to 10:00 PM. And then the proceeds, 20% of them will go to our class and put towards our senior activities for next year. And I think that's all we have for tonight.
Maggie, no updates from you? You're good? Okay. Samantha, I don't want to miss that. I also saw you in the awards slide. So congratulations to both of you guys.
Thank you.
Any questions for our student advisors? Kevin?
Just real quickly, it's nice to meet you all. I haven't had a chance to, to meet you in person. So it's nice to see you on here. I love all the fundraisers, but it's definitely wrecking my diet now that I can go from burgers right to ice cream. I definitely would often take that up. Just a quick question. I don't know if either, if any of you, Logan, Samantha, if you have any feedback or experience with the vaccination place, whether yourself, if you're willing to share, or just your kind of general perception from friends, classmates, that maybe took us up on.
I mean, I could start first. So I personally was already vaccinated, but I have three, you know, younger siblings who went in to get their first shot. And, you know, from what I heard, it went really smoothly. It was kind of, you know, in and out. And, you know, they really appreciated, you know, the chance to kind of get that locally and not have to, you know, go crazy, you know, searching for vaccination sites. And, you know, I know I personally had to like drive to like Watertown to get it. So it was really nice for, you know, some of the Wakefields kids to be able to, you know, get it at the Fields House.
Yeah, kind of just bouncing off what Sam said. I personally didn't go, but I did hear from a lot of students that it was nice so that they didn't have to search around, like stressing to find an appointment. And the school was kind of like easy access and to just go and get it there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I was talking. Sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to thank Logan and Sam. I guess this will be the end of your tenure with us. So it's been great having you on these calls. You know, present yourselves extremely well, very mature, very articulate. So it's been a pleasure and certainly wish the best to you, for both of you next year as well. We will miss you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you guys be willing to share where you're heading next year? Samantha?
Yeah, sure. So I have committed to the honors program at Northeastern. You know, I was also waitlisted at, you know, Harvard or Brown, so I'm waiting for those. But, you know, it'll probably be Northeastern.
Wowzers. Okay. Congrats. That's awesome. Logan?
I'm going to Middlebury College in Vermont, and I'm going to be on their track and field team.
Oh, nice. Awesome. That's great. Amy Wall, I think you had a question?
Yep, just want to make sure I have the dates right. I wasn't writing fast enough. So the car parade you said was, is that Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. And then the Fuddruckers, that's on Thursday? This Thursday or next Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday is Fuddruckers, and then next Tuesday is the car parade.
Perfect. And then I got Sox is the same as this Thursday?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Congratulations to you seniors. Unfortunately, I won't have a chance really to work with you guys, but best of luck with college and everything else. You guys are going to be doing great. So thank you.
Doug, go ahead.
So for Logan and Samantha, after you graduate, in between graduate school and your undergraduate school programs, if you'd like to come back and teach for a little while, I'm sure we can figure something out. While you're freshmen, if you would like to zoom back in and let us know how it's going, we would love to see you. So we're very proud of you. We really appreciate all that you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Stephen.
Sorry. Congratulations to those graduating. That's, that's fantastic. My, my wife's family's from around Middlebury, so gorgeous campus. Awesome. If you're interested, I think they also have a quidditch team, just saying. When it comes to the, the car parade, where could people find the parade group if they'd like to sort of be out and celebrate, you know, yourselves?
So from what I know right now, you know, they've said that the rope, the, I'm sorry, the route will be posted soon. You know, I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, an email will be sent out from administration. And I'm sure that, you know, there will be posts all over, you know, social media, you know, the seniors, you know, page on Instagram or on Facebook.
Okay. To be a little more specific, it will probably be similar to last year, I would assume, which went by all of the different elementary schools and kind of went around town. But it'll be kind of like a big blocked off event possibly, like it was last year. So I'm sure there will be an opportunity to watch somewhere.
Thank you.
Amy Lehman, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say what Logan said, that it does go by all the elementary schools. So if you want a good seat, just your closest elementary school.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. Tom, Mr. Markham?
Okay, thank you. I move that the school committee approved the minutes of the May 11, 2021 school committee meeting. And accept the minutes of the May 6, 2021 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call. Judy?
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yeah.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wall?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda are chairs' comments, of which I have none tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this off to Superintendent Lyons for his, his section, his remarks, reports and recommendations.
Thank you very much, Susie. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to take my topics out of order.
Yep, that sounds good. Approved.
I'd like to start off by welcoming Meg Webb and introducing her to the school committee and to the Wakefield community. Meg will be starting as our new principal of Galvin Middle School on July 1st. She resides close by in Melrose, is a, is the proud mom of a one-year-old, Jack, who I got, they had the pleasure of meeting. And also has a soon-to-be four-year-old daughter as well. And so Meg is currently the, the Boston Public School principal at Orchard Gardens. And she's been principal there since 2014. And so Meg distinguished herself very, very quickly in the interview process. And, and really kind of made the decision really kind of easy for the committee, actually in round one, which is kind of not exactly what we had planned, but I think we've got a really, just an exceptional candidate for this position. Meg, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much for that introduction, Doug. It's good to see everybody. Really nice to be here. So thank you for the invitation. Yeah, I actually, I was laughing a little bit when you said I live in Melrose because I, my kids are, as Doug said, not school age yet. So I didn't quite realize until very recently that Melrose and Wakefield are really big rivals. So I kind of toned that one down, Doug, when you introduced me to the staff the other day. But so now I'll be conscious of that. But, um, yeah, so much to learn, both with my own kids entering school soon and, uh, and now being part of the Wakefield family. So, uh, so now I am aware. But thanks for that introduction. It's, it's wonderful to be here. As Doug mentioned, I'm currently wrapping up as principal in Boston. I've been at my school for eight years. Prior to that, I worked for Citizen Schools, which was a nonprofit that did a lot of extended day work in middle schools. In urban systems, it was headquartered in Boston and was very big kind of around the race to the top. Extending the school year craze, I guess we could say, of, of, of that era. And prior to that, I went to Harvard for school leadership. And prior to that was a high school teacher and actually taught in Montgomery County, Maryland, at a very large high school there. Where I started out and where I became a teacher leader and kind of set out on the path I've been on. So I'm really excited. The path has taken me to Wakefield. The process was kind of like stars aligning. I think it was wonderful to meet Doug and then to learn about Galvin and just starting to meet the community little by little. I'm hoping to get to the school this week and see it in action. Meet Adam and get to know a bit about his leadership and, and where the school is headed. So, um, yeah, I'm really pleased to be here and happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Mike, go ahead.
So make welcome. You can commiserate with our athletic director. He has a saying, polls against him, living in Melrose, but working in Wakefield. So, so that's great. I'd like to say you have a better commute, but sometimes coming from Melrose to Wakefield probably takes longer than it takes to drive into Boston. So depending on the light you hit as well, but it's great to have you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Meg? Kevin?
Not a question, but to join Mr. Boudreaux and welcome you to Wakefield, I think, you know, as you can imagine, the Galvin Middle School, I think, is such a critical part of our school system, both physically, I think it's location, but I think it's believable that it is. I think over the years, a great culture has been built there. And I think in many ways, both literally and figuratively, it's kind of become like the gem of our school system. So I'm excited looking over your background. Expertise that you're bringing in, hopefully continue to move that particular school forward. But then, as part of the leadership team, the whole district. Look forward to getting to know you and work with you more. And, and welcome, welcome to Wakefield.
Go ahead, Amy.
I just wanted to say welcome as well. I'm a current Galvin mom, so hopefully be able to see you a little bit more and look forward to working with you. Welcome.
Thanks.
Looks like that's everybody. I, I too, my kids are getting ready to leave the Galvin. So that makes me sad because I would have liked to have been, been watching you in action as you, as you get up to speed. As I think Kevin said, the Galvin is, is kind of a special place. I think particularly because it includes fifth graders. It, it makes it kind of a different, a different school. And I, I know that a lot of people had concerns about fifth graders going into middle school. And I think Wakefield does an amazing job with kind of bringing our fifth graders kind of along for the ride, keeping them separate, but integrating them where it makes sense. And I can't say enough good things about the, the four years that my kids had at the Galvin. But I know you come highly recommended. The committee, you know, said wonderful things about you. And I, I know we, like you said, the stars aligned. I think we feel like the stars aligned to be able to get someone of your caliber and your background and your, your Boston public experience is just a gift for this community. So I think as much as you feel like the stars aligned, I think we feel like they, they aligned as well. So we're excited to have you here. So thanks, thanks for joining us tonight.
Of course.
All right. I think Doug, we're probably ready to move on.
Yep. Meg, thank you very much. Meg's had, has a busy week this week in, in Wakefield. She met faculty and staff last night on a Zoom call. Tonight's school committee and Thursday afternoon. There's going to be an opportunity for Meg to meet parents in the community as well. So Meg, we will see you in, in a day or so.
We'll see you soon. It was so nice to see you all. Look forward to working with you.
Have a good night, Meg.
Thanks.
So I'd like to jump down to Kelly Tobine. And, and Kelly is our middle school resource officer. And Kelly is really just an exception, an exceptional person to work with, for us at, at Galvin. You will often see her in classrooms, working with students. I often think she's like a teacher with, in a uniform. And I know the students feel that way as well. Kelly has been working with Matt Malone, our other SRO, and the department on acquiring a, a service dog for, for Wakefield and for the Wakefield Police Department. I'd like to turn it over to Kelly to talk a little bit about her work and where we are in that process. Kelly?
Hi, everyone. Hi, Ms. Wall. It's nice to meet you. So we have a comfort service dog here at Wakefield Police. And it's just great that I'm the SRO as well. So hopefully it will benefit the schools. If that's what you guys want. Service dog helps everything from kids who are struggling to be in school to kids trying to make friends. You never know what someone's going to bond over. Also, I do a lot of CIT work, which is critical incident with the elderly and the homeless. And my job right now is to bridge the connection between the outside world and the school department. And this is just, this dog is another tool in my, in my back pocket. She's great. Her name's Sammy. She's currently eight weeks old. She's about seven pounds. She is asleep on my feet right now. So I will show you what she looks like. I'm going to pick her up off the ground. So give me one second. She is a black English lab. And her temperament and her demeanor are bred for this service work. She has been at the police department for the past two days and officers have been taking her out and feeding her and playing with her. And she's just great. I do better with questions. So if anyone has questions for me, I can certainly answer any question that you have.
Mike, go ahead.
What will be the progression of, of her going into service? How will that work time-wise?
So basically, the dog, it takes about a year to train. And that is just her being in the environment that it is. It's a 20-point test. She can't take the test until she, until she's one years old. And when she turns one, I call the lady who does their certificates and that the, it's a two-person test. So the person's administering the test and there's a person that's observing the test. And they give it to us. The test is all online. You can see what the test entails. I mean, and basically they have to like not be afraid of noises, not go after food. It's a very simple test, as long as the dog is good-natured. And so in order for me to train for this task, we need to be in environments that she'll be in. I have a, I have a therapy dog now. So I've gone through the test before. We do work up at Hogan Regional, which is a state-run facility for the developmentally disabled. So I kind of know what I'm in for. And so she's just going to be a rock star.
One other question. Is this the first dog we've had with this type of role in Wakefield, or have we had one previously?
No, this is the first one. We have another dog, Una. She's a drug tracking dog, but this is the first comfort therapy dog.
Cool. No, she's beautiful. Thank you.
Mr. Markham?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Kelly, great, great to see you again and great, great presentation. That's a, that's a beautiful looking animal. I, I had a lab for many years growing up as a, growing up as a kid. So just seeing the dog brought back fond memories. Anyways, one of my questions was, was what Mike asked. So I'll skip to question two. What are the types of tasks that this dog will be either performing or supporting you in performing? And is it, is it the dog to be wherever you are? Like if you're at Galvin one day, it's there? Or will it be, and I know it'll be at high school. Well, is the dog being trained specifically with you or with, with your, with your peers?
Yeah, so I, the dog is going to be with me. I'm the handler. She'll often visit all the schools and my partner, Matt Long, will be with us. But I'm the one that's going to hold the certification and kind of be responsible for her. What entails is whatever the school needs, it, it will do. It can be a reward system for kids. If they have five good days in a row, they can come play with the dog for an hour. If, whatever it can be, a lot of dogs, a lot of kids who can't talk would rather talk to a dog than a human. So it's, this dog can be used in a lot of different facets. It's not only just in school, but I'm on a regional task force where officers board awful calls. She's going to come to all the debriefings with me. And then along with the guys here at the station. And then if I'm on patrol, she'll come on patrol with me and she's just going to work in, she's just going to be with me and work her magic every time.
That's great. And can I, do I assume that part of that is that since obviously you're, you, you must care for the dog at your home? Or is the dog like with you like all the time? You, you've now, you, you've now added an extended member of your family with this task? Is that, is that, is that true too?
I, I couldn't hear the last part, but yeah, she is at, she is in addition to my home. Yeah, she was going to come home and stay with me.
That is, that, that is quite a commitment. That's very impressive. I mean, in addition to everything that you do for us, that's, that's impressively, you know, something else, Kelly. Thank you for taking that on. Could, could you help? And you've used, or maybe during this presentation, there have been three terms used. They don't all mean the same thing. Could you help or maybe between you and the superintendent, help us understand the difference between the term service animal, that's been a term used, comfort animal and therapy animal? And is this dog a little bit of all those things? I mean, I doubt it, right? So what, what do we, what are we talking about? And what are the differences between those terms?
So a comfort and therapy are pretty much interchangeable. It's whatever term you want to use for. It's usually comfort slash therapy dog. And then the service animal is a little different. That's more for people who have needs that would need like someone who has seizures or whatever. So she's not a service dog. She's not going to be able to go into Stop and Shop and out to restaurants. And she's not, she doesn't have the service dog tag. She's going to have a comfort therapy dog tag.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. And, and thanks for everything that, that you guys do. You're just terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
Oh, no, go right ahead. Okay, thanks. So I'm so excited about this, this dog. When I first heard about it, I was like doing backflips. So I'm excited for the kids. I'm excited for you. I think this is such a great opportunity for our kids and for the town. So congratulations. And she's adorable. Quick question, as far as food and things like that go, is that your responsibility? Or is that something that donations can come in for?
Yeah, so Sal, who owns the Subaru dealership in Wakefield, is donating all the money, food, medical for it. I do know that he does run fundraisers and some of the proceeds, different fundraisers will come to us. And we will certainly get that out on all our social media platforms. And she does have a Instagram account already. So, you know, she's going to be, hopefully we'll be able to do, like, find, find Sammy. And she'll be somewhere and she'll be covered in coffee cups and might be at the remedy exchange or in a thing of flowers and she'll be at the florist or something like that. So she's definitely going to be a big social media dog. And, and we're going to go from there. But yeah, Sal from the Subaru dealership is donating all the money for her, which is the reason why we can probably have her.
That's amazing. So again, congratulations and good luck. And I can't wait to meet her.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Hi. Thank you, Kelly. Pleasure to meet you. Super excited about the dog. Super cute. We have a chocolate lab. She's crazy. Yours looks really calm. So that's awesome. But so I was curious about, well, what's the Instagram handle going to be, obviously. And then when we have students that have, so when you say like students could come to the dog, are we anticipating that sort of the dog is going to sort of be in your, your office, the general area of like, where that's guidance or wherever and what school? I think I'm wondering about if, I'm wondering about students that might have allergies and such. You know, what's our approach to that? Is there a best practice already? I know that we're going to talk about a policy, but I'm just curious in Lehman's terms, what the, what the thought might be.
Yeah, so it's kind of, we work with the school on whatever they wish and require. What I know schools have done in the past is that they send a big letter out and forms. And if there's someone that has like a really bad allergy and they don't, or they're really, you know, afraid of dogs, I know exactly who those kids are and we don't go in those places. Because this is such a new program, we could definitely roll it out as, you know, she stays with my office and people come to us. So it's, it's definitely not going to be a surprise when she walks through the door in someone's classroom. And usually we have permission slips or, you know, people know when she's going to be where. And usually we have permission slips or, you know, people know when she's gonna be, where she's gonna be. For the beginning part, it might be easier for them to come to us just until everyone gets used to her and sees her around the school. But I'm very open to designing something that works for everyone.
That's great.
Oh, and it's that Sammy, S-A-M-Y, Wakefield, one word.
Perfect.
Is her Instagram account.
Oh, Amy's already on it. Any other, uh, remaining questions? So the only question I had was, um, similar to Stevens is the, um, you know, not every person, including me, is a dog lover, although Sammy looks very cute. But, um, you know, not all kids feel comfortable around dogs. And, and the allergies is certainly something that, you know, that we've gotta kind of, uh, consider. But it's, it sounds like that there's kind of a plan and thinking through that, you know, kids and parents identify themselves as, as kids that are either scared or allergic and that, that you'll ensure that, that, that Sammy is not kind of in, i- i- near those children or, you know, in situations where they might be near those children. So, um, that sounds like a, a reasonable kind of approach. But I definitely, you know, there, there certainly are kids out there that are either allergic or scared. And maybe, you know, for some of those scared kids, maybe this is a way to kind of work through that fear. But I, I think it's really important that we hear out from families where there is concerns. Cause it, it's, we don't, we don't want kids having allergic reactions and we, we certainly don't want kids, you know, kind of being nervous about walking around school.
Yeah, I mean, the good part is, um, you know, if, if parents are, if it's a fear thing, I can always come to their house and we can do it in their backyard and kind of break that fear down before it's in school. So I have no problem with this. A lot of different avenues and we can roll this out really slow. And if there's a kink in the knot, we'll just step, take a few steps back and take a breath and just figure it out. But there's a little, this, you know, with the fierce allergies, we can't really work around and that's fine. But we know exactly who, it's like the peanut allergies. We know exactly who they are. We know where they're gonna be, when they're gonna be, you know, so I'm, I'm sure we can be on top of it too.
Perfect. Any, um, remaining questions for Kelly? Okay. Doug, did you have some more to, to say on this topic?
No, I just appreciate, um, collaborating with Chief Scory and, and Kelly on this. And I, and I think she can't say it enough and nor can we, but you know, this isn't something starting tomorrow. This is something that has been thought about for a few years now. It's been a few years in the making. Um, we are kind of creating a new policy that we'll be putting on the table this evening to support us in this work. And, and supporting students comes first, right? And so when it comes to students with allergies or students with anxiety that, that might have difficulty or may, may need to be kept separate from, from the dog, we, we will do that, right? And, and like Kelly said, if we need to scale back, we will scale back. But we will be working with our nurses, um, and our parents to make sure that we're communicating very effectively about process timelines and everything that we're doing. So more to follow on this. Thank you, Kelly. I'm, I appreciate the time.
Yeah, Kelly, thanks for coming.
All right. See ya.
Take care. So we're very fortunate this evening, um, to have the project management group from Left Field. We have Shane Nolan, Lynn Stapleton and Linda Lap- Lapordo. So Lynn, um, would be a familiar face that I think you might remember from our work on the Walton addition. And so we're, we're fortunate to have Left Field back, uh, working with us on the public school side. I know that you guys are doing some other work in, in the district, but it's a pleasure to have you back. And we invited you here this evening to share a little bit about where we are in the process with MSBA in the high school. Shane, I can turn it over to you at this point if you'd like.
Sure, yeah, I can share my screen, Doug. So, uh, I'll just turn it over and then we'll have Lynn start and, um, we'll get going.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Doug said, I've worked on several schools, uh, including the Galvin Middle School, um, for the town of Wakefield. And we're very excited to be back to be working on the Wakefield Memorial High School project. I have with me our OPM team from Left Field, Shane Nolan and Linda Lapordo. But we're gonna walk through this process a little bit with you and just give you kind of a high level idea about what's coming, coming up next in the MSBA process. Shane, do you wanna start us off and give us a little bit of a background on the project?
Great, thank you. And good, good evening, everybody. Um, just some background to the, uh, the Wakefield Memorial High School. And it was built in, in nineteen sixty as a junior high school. In nineteen seventy-two, um, after a couple of additions on the north and south of the building, it was, um, reopened as a, as a high school, the Memorial High School. And it served as a high school, uh, up until this point. And in two thousand sixteen, based on a, um, on some, some, some needs, the full assessment was done. The architectural firm was brought in to, uh, to look at the existing building, the facilities and what was needed to bring it up to a, uh, twenty-first century education facility. And that report was presented to the permanent building committee back in two thousand sixteen. And that report did highlight a number of, uh, physical challenges within the building and also numerous challenges that, um, affected the, uh, the, the delivery of, of, um, educational programmatic, uh, services to the kids in, in the high school. We're not gonna get into that report to, tonight, but I, I, I did include a couple of photos, um, the exterior of the building. You can see the windows. The windows are original to the building. They're all single pane windows and a lot of them are leaking and, uh, have, um, come to the end of their, their expected life expectancy. The photo on the right's a bit blurry there, but the, uh, the exterior walls don't have any insulation. And nor do they have sufficient cavities to, to provide insulation in them so that the building is not, uh, the building exterior is not efficient. And that report looked at some of the classrooms. I've shown some, some science rooms here specifically were called out as being too small and lacking the facilities to, uh, to provide the science program required for a, uh, high school. And, and also the, uh, mechanical, uh, systems in the building. A lot of these are original and old. And they don't work well. They're inefficient and they're hard to maintain. And because of the rage, uh, replacement parts are, um, hard to get and expensive if they are to, to, to be replaced. So, so just some of the deficiencies in the existing high school building. And so, so the high school, uh, project team, um, there, there's a, uh, school building committee that's made up by the Wakefield Permanent Building Committee. The, uh, the Wakefield Permanent Building Committee is, um, responsible for overseeing all the design and construction projects and any, um, town-owned buildings or any property owned or leased by the, the town of Wakefield. And they've got the sole authority to procure, uh, award bids and execute contracts on top, on behalf of the town and administer those contracts, um, based on those bylaws of the, the town of Wakefield. And the MSBA request that we, we do and set up a, a high school building committee specific to this. So, so that high school building committee is gonna be made up of the, uh, the Wakefield Permanent Building Committee. As long, uh, as well as the, um, the Wakefield High School Advisory Committee, which consists of, um, some school and town employees and officials. There's members of the community on that. And, uh, and that, that committee will act as an extension of the, uh, prominent building committee to oversee the MSBA process and to, uh, to advise during the construction of the new high school project. I've listed out the, the names of everybody here. So on the top, we have the, uh, the members of the permanent building committee will be the, the voting members of the, uh, school building committee. Uh, there's eleven, uh, permanent building committee members included. And there's some other members that, um, MSBA requests that we make a reasonable effort to include certain people on that school building committee. So Joe Conway from the, the TPW is MCPPO. And that's a Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. And they requested somebody with that certification beyond the committee. We have, uh, Julie Galvin, the town council chair, Steve Mayo, the town administrator. We have a couple of members, Tom and Kevin from the school committee that are on tonight. Also Doug is a superintendent. Bob Sheroe is the facilities director who's familiar with the, uh, the running of the facilities. Also the, uh, the high school principal. And then we have James Sullivan, who's a member of the, uh, the finance committee. And then we have, in addition to that, we have certain community members who will serve on the, uh, school building committee. And then we have other people who will serve, who, uh, who are involved with the town. Jonathan Chines is on the, uh, town council and other people are involved in, uh, in various educational, uh, administration and foundations within the town. So, uh, total of thirty-six people, I think, on the school building committee to, uh, oversee the, the project on behalf of the town with the, uh, the permanent building committee being those, uh, those voting members under the town charter. Left Field, um, we're very happy to be, to be here. Um, a little bit about Left Field. Um, we're, we're a full-service owners' project management firm. All we do is owners' project management. We represent owners, uh, who are constructing, designing and constructing buildings. We don't have an arm that designs building. We don't have an arm who constructs building. Project management, representing owners is our specialty. And we've been around for, for thirteen, almost fourteen years and we have twenty-nine people on our, our staff. Members of our staff have worked with the MSBA since inception in two thousand fourteen, including Lynn and myself. And in that time, we've done over one point five billion dollars worth of, uh, K to twelve schools in Massachusetts through the MSBA program. And some of our significant high schools that we've, uh, we've worked on is a Bel Airica Memorial High School, which opened last September. We're currently working on the Durphy High School in New Bedford, or sorry, in Fall River, which is due to open this September. We're also working on the Walton High School, which just started construction recently, and Revere High School, which, uh, just started design, uh, with the MSBA process a few months ago. And we've worked on, on a number of schools, high school, uh, schools that, um, have required us to, to manage complex logistics and challenging sites. And it's not often, depending on the size of the school, that a town has a, a, an open space that can accommodate a two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand square foot school. So we're often faced with working in, uh, existing school campuses, uh, close to, uh, occupied and, and functional schools. We, we've done that a number of times and we're, we're very well versed in, in how to do that and how to, uh, to schedule phase and, uh, meet any challenges that may come up. And then, uh, as Doug mentioned, um, at the outset, we, uh, we are familiar with Wakefield. Lynn previously worked on the Walton School. And Lynn and I are, um, currently working on the, uh, the public safety renovation and addition project. And just a little bit of our team. Uh, Lynn introduces briefly. Um, Jim Rogers is the, uh, the founder and owner of, of Left Field Project Management. So, so Jim is the owner, has a responsibility for all projects that the Left Field are involved in. And for the Wakefield Memorial High School, your day-to-day team will be Lynn Stapleton, who will act as a project director. myself Shane Nolan will be, uh, the senior project manager and I'll be, uh, assisted by Linda Lapordo, also a senior project manager with Left Field. And Michael, uh, or Mark Refor would be our site representative. Mark will come on board, uh, closer to when we get to, to the construction phase. And once we get into construction, Mark will be on, on site full-time, day-to-day, overseeing the construction on behalf of, uh, Left Field and the town.
Mark also worked, Mark also worked on the Galvin Middle School and the Walton Elementary School projects as the site representative. So he's, um, he knows Wakefield very well too.
Thank you. And then we have some in-house special specialists that we can call in at any time. And Adam Kane, Matt Casey and Jay Fax and all, all work for Left Field and can bring their expertise to, uh, to the project whenever we need to bring those in. We also go out and, um, to, to some outside consultants when, when we need, uh, PMC or a cost estimating consultants. We have a code consultant, the building envelope, exteriors consultant, and also, uh, we bring somebody in at each phase and where each design, uh, milestone with MSBA to, uh, to do design reviews. So we have a large team. Uh, Lynn, Linda and myself will be your day-to-day folks, but, uh, certainly we can call on expertise anytime that that is required. So, um, MSBA or the Mass Schools Building Authority, um, a little bit about, about them. And you're gonna be hearing a lot about them. And their, their mission is to partner with Massachusetts communities to support design and construction of educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable, cost-effective schools. And that, that's all they do. They're a state agency that, um, their, their function is to, uh, to go out, see what schools, uh, are in need of, um, upgrading and replacement. And they administer, um, a grant program to, uh, to help fund some of those, uh, those projects. And the MSBA grants program is a, a non-entitlement competitive program. And, and by that, I mean, um, each year MSBA opens up the, uh, the program to what they call the statement of interest submission period. And any, any town or city or district in the Commonwealth who wants to get into that program must submit a statement of interest. MSBA reviews all of those statements of interest. And based on the, uh, the most needy and most urgent, uh, schools and based on the, uh, the financing available to the MSBA project, um, towns are invited into that. And just as a sort of a, you know, benchmark, I think between sixteen eighty schools, apply every year, or maybe ten to fourteen actually get into the program. So not everybody who applies gets in. And only the most, uh, urgent, um, schools get in. And if you don't get in one year, you have to go back and start again and reapply the next year. So if you were the last one not to get in, doesn't mean you automatically get in the following year. You have to start the process all over again. And, and then the, uh, the, the last thing, we, we are in the MSBA program. So they do have a rigorous, um, process that we, we, we must follow. And Left Field is, is your owners' project manager. Sometimes you wear two hats. We're representing both the, the town of Wakefield and the MSBA to make sure that that process is, is, uh, followed by, by the town, by the designers, the contractors and all the stakeholders involved in the project. The good news, um, MSBA, the, the reimbursement rate in Wakefield currently is forty-nine point nine four percent of eligible project costs. And I won't go into it tonight. I'm sure we'll be back to you, um, as we move forward with this project. But not all the costs that, um, are incurred on a project are, are eligible for reimbursement. MSBA categorically, categorically does not reimburse some costs. And other costs, they have a cap on it, so they won't pay over, uh, if you exceed that cap. And, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that as we get into, uh, the costs later on and, and the reimbursement. And just a couple of other notes on MSBA then, you know, they were, they were, uh, trending in two thousand four, uh, and in the sixteen, seventeen years, they've, they've funded over fifteen billion dollars. So they're, they're funding about a billion dollars a year to, uh, to Massachusetts, uh, public schools. And they've, uh, they've worked on about six hundred projects in that time and, and that's benefited, right, six hundred thousand kids across the Commonwealth. So it's a, uh, a great program. And you'll be hearing about the MSBA and the processes we go through. And, uh, we'll explain more, more of that process as we go through each phase. And with that, I'll hand it over to Lynn to, to talk a little bit about that MSBA process.
As Shane said, um, the MSBA process is a very rigor, rigorous process. It's highly prescribed. Uh, there are eight modules or eight steps, uh, that you must follow in order to make sure that you have, um, you have turned, turned over every stone possible in determining what the best solution for the town of Wakefield will be in terms of a new high school. There's a lot to talk about in terms of the MSBA process and I invite you to, um, to visit the Mass School Building Authority's website, um, so that you can read about it a little bit more in depth. But we'll give you an overview as we go through the next few slides about each of the steps. Shane? The eligibility period, which is module one, has been completed by the school district in the town. In April ninth, twenty nineteen, Wakefield submitted a statement of interest. And I know from working in, in Wakefield for many, many years, I know this, uh, this key, you know, this submission, when it was approved on December eleventh in twenty nineteen, uh, came after many, many years of, um, submitting a statement of interest before, uh, the town was approved to move to the next step. Once you're in the eligibility, um, phase, what the intent is to execute an initial compliance certificate or an ICC. This certificate basically provides the basis of how you're gonna work with MSBA and sets the parameters as you move forward. And from that, the district's sets an educate, submits an educational pro, profile to MSBA along with its maintenance and capital planning record. These two items together really form the basis of moving forward with the design process, um, for the new school. And once those steps are com- And once those steps are complete, a design enrollment analysis is conducted by the MSBA. They have a pretty in depth process for determining what the design enrollment for a school will be. There are discussions held with the district, but for the most part, it's a modified cohort survivor method that determines enrollment. And it's in fact affected by a couple of factors within the within the town, which is, you know, basically any planned construction, any any development growth that's planned, as well as the sustained enrollment within the school. But once the, once there is a an agreed design enrollment, the we move on to the next phase after MSBA, after the town approves a funding agree funding for the feasibility studying schematic design process. In December of twenty twenty, the executed design enrollment grade configuration certificate was submitted. And they began the feasibility study process. And module two of that feasibility study process is forming the team. And from that point, first first up on the team would is the owners project manager, often called the OPM. The the town procured the services of the OPM and MSB approved it on May third of twenty twenty one. And Leftfield became the project manager for a Wakeville High School project. Again, at the end of these slides, you'll see a website link so that you can go to these various the MSB website to learn a little bit more about the process. Next slide, Shane. As I said, we're in module two, forming the project team. We have so they, the town has selected the owners project manager, and we're now in the designer selection phase. We have put together a request for services, designer services, and it's currently been submitted to MSBA for review. It's a standard template that MSBA puts out, and we modify it to fit the town of Wakeville's requirements for for the high school project. And as soon as we get approval from MSBA, we will be submitted submitting it in the central register, a local newspaper, as well as comm buys to to begin the search for a designer for the project. The MSBA is highly involved with the designer selection process, and they have a what they call a DSP panel or a designer selection panel. It's composed of thirteen members, and they allow three members from the from the town to be part of this designer selection panel. What happens is the designers will submit proposals. The proposals will go out to everyone on the school building committee. They'll have a chance to review it and provide comment to the three members that are selected to represent the district. And together, those three members with the thirteen members of the designer selection panel will meet to review the proposals and select a short list of designers for interviews in the next phase of the process. Once we have a designer on board, we enter into module three, which is known as the feasibility study. The feasibility study is made up of two components, the preliminary design program and the preferred schematic report. And in the preliminary divine design program, what we're doing is trying to document the existing conditions of the existing school so that we have a basis to decide what 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 if the existing school can be added on to, or whether or not it's new construction is is a is the right choice. But also, while we're doing that, we're developing the educational program with the districts as well as a space summary that that is in relationship to the educational program that's developed. Various options will be put together so that we can determine whether or not we can start to look at all the viable options to the path for a new high school. And from those options, we would start to whittle that down to the preferred option, which we go more in depth into when we get to the preferred schematic design report. Next slide. Module four is the schematic design. Once we choose a preferred option, we further develop that preferred option during the schematic design phase. We develop a final design program, and we we do all the due diligence required to fully fully develop the scope, the budget, and the schedule for the project. Once we have that put together, we go to for approval with MSBA. MSBA approves it. They determine what their participation in the project will be in terms of funding. And then it's turned back to the town for the town to go out and vote on the project for their share of the funding. We expect that to be complete sometime in November to December of twenty twenty two. Once, once the town, once the town votes for funding, then basically we sign a project funding agreement with MSBA.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm I'm going to just go a little bit further into a little bit of an overview on the the schedule layout of this. So the roadmap to this preferred solution, as Lynn just went through, is is through working through the existing school and coming up what the options are in addition to in addition or renovation of your existing school. And this continues to get reviewed by the MSBA staff and through their policies and through their groups, and then eventually comes back into to vote for Wakefield. Shane, if you could go to the next slide. So what happens then is we go into module six, which is the more detailed design. Once the preferred option has been approved, there is there's now a a set project. And we start working through the design of that of that project, which is estimated to take usually about twelve months. Following that, module six is module seven, which is the actual construction of the school, whether it be an addition to the existing or renovation or a new school building. The the timeframes obviously differentiate a little bit depending on the scope. Typically, it's about twenty four to thirty months until you're you're actually able to to have a finished product, project is is done, and the school is open. That does not mean that we go away. We are still in module eight, which is what they refer to as the project closeout, which is for one year. And there's still, MSBA still has a pretty stringent list of tasks that have to continue throughout the the first year of the school being open to make sure that things are functioning correctly. We do a lot of on our internal end, do a lot of research and and just double checking, triple checking that everything is working correctly. We we also, in some cases, even work with the district or the school to to make sure that the the school facilities understand the new systems. A lot of these infrastructure systems of running buildings are are very very efficient, which is great, but there is also a learning curve to them, of course. And that's where we continue to stay involved. So this this next schedule, just to kind of give you an idea of where we are for the first couple of modules throughout the the funding of the project, which eventually then takes it into into actual final design. So all of this within the town funding and execution of that project is estimated to be, as Lynn mentioned earlier, November, December of twenty twenty two. And then there's the potential of of the the construction project running for about close to two to two and a half years past that.
Great, thank you, Linda. And so that that was a quick introduction to to the project. And there's certainly be be many more opportunities to to get involved. And we've spoken to the the PR person in Wakefield. Jennifer is going to help us get some some information out to people through the town website, through the the town Facebook page. And as Lynn mentioned, we we would encourage you to go to the MSBA website. They've got a wealth of information there on on the process and on schools that have been competed through the process, schools that are in their process, schools that may be coming into their process. And and also, wait, Left Field, and we are going to engage a a third party website designer to to get a project website specific to the high school project up and running. We're working on that right now. We have some information up on a the page, but coming soon, we'll we'll certainly be putting all all the information and documents and making that the place to go to for any any questions that the public may have on the project. So with that, I'll turn it back to to Doug or the chair. Thank you for listening.
No, thank you for for a great, informative, detailed presentation. So I'm going to open it up for questions from the committee. I think I'm sure somebody has a question. Amy Wall, go ahead.
So you mentioned with the, and I forget the the term that was exactly used, but the design team that will have three members of the community. Is that something that's already been chosen, or how do people find out more about that?
And that's something we'll work with the the town administrator and the permanent building committee and to 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 come up with those three three representatives. And as you saw, there's, I think, I said thirty six people on the school building committee. And we it hasn't been decided yet, and we still have to do that. But we'll we'll we're looking forward to town and then come up with those three representatives through the school building committee.
So Amy, it's not community members, it's people that are already on the high school working group.
Oh.
It's those, yeah. And and then a large contingency of MSBA folks. Thirteen thirteen and and then three from our working group. So it's, yeah.
Okay. And then my other question, as part of the design process goes, so the different designers will have their ideas of the building. And then is my is my understanding correct that that one will be chosen? And then will that get kind of, for lack of a better term, nitpicked to see what it's going to actually look like? Or is it just going to say, this is the one we picked and no comment from those numbers?
You might be familiar with the visioning sessions that you went through when Dorian Whittier did a feasibility study a few years ago, where they looked at all of the various options that could be done on the school. They they held community visioning sessions to talk about what you were looking for in the high school. They looked at addition renovations as well as new construction, both on the existing site and a site across the street where the ball fields were. So it's very, you'll go through a process very similar to that. It won't be just chosen from the proposals that the designers provide. The designers will, in response to our requests for designer services, will submit proposals. And the whole school building committee will have a chance to look at all of those proposals and make comments on them. And so that the three representatives of the town will have all the comments of the work of the school building committee and take with them when they have discussions with MSBA on shortlisting and issues. They they usually shortlist three to four designers. And from that point, there is an interview process. And from that inner, from the interviews, they will select a designer. But the MSBA has a heavy hand in the selection of the designers, as you can see. They have thirteen members versus the town's three. But we, you know, the school building committee will have have their voices heard, at least at these designer selection panel meetings.
So Lynn, for clarity, for Amy, the designer gets, like, the designer is going to put proposals in just for general work that they've done, because that comes before the feasibility study, right? So the MSBA chooses the designer ahead of then getting to like the actual options that we as a community, well, actually, that that working group will get to decide on. But the designer gets chosen, I think, probably on like a portfolio and the kinds of work that they've done in the past. And then we enter the feasibility, which then says, like, are we going to do a renovation? Could we build on the ball field? Let's just say that we could build somewhere else, like that would be option three. So the designer gets picked even before we get into the feasibility work.
They they get picked on qualifications and their portfolio of work, really. But once they come on board, they're starting from scratch, really. They're going to have sessions with the community, with the school building committee, to kind of get an idea of what the community is looking for. So there'll be a lot of opportunity for involvement in the process to, you know, so that they they really want to hear what the town and the school is looking for. And from that, from that input, they will start to develop scenarios that they will bring to you to take a look at, to see how you feel about them, and that's how the processes start. But it 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 won't be just ideas that they come up with for the project. But oftentimes in their proposals, they will show ideas just to get you excited about choosing them as a designer. But it's based really on nothing. I mean, we're we're starting from the beginning and trying to build up to what the right solution, both educational, educationally and physically is for the town, so.
Thank you.
Stephen.
Thank you. And am I right then in thinking, so we in theory would have picked a designer by, say, the springtime of next year? And what would follow would be approximately six months, perhaps even eight of sort of talks with the town through, I think, what we saw, visioning studies, forums, just sort of gathering some intel in groups. And then, once we have sort of that that design, then, once it gets approved, then we're looking for funding in theory towards sort of like Q four of next year.
We we expect to have a designer by by the end of August or early September. And that would start that process. And as Lynn said, that the options during the feasibility, there's 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 three submissions to MSBA. There's the the primary design program. Then there's the preferred schematic design, and then there's the schematic design. So we think we'll have a designer on board by early September this year. And and those three phases of that schematic feasibility design will bring us up to to the fall of two thousand twenty two, which is why we expect we'll go to the the town to look for funding.
We're looking to go perhaps to the town for funding at the fall town meeting in November. Or maybe the the following month as a special town meeting in December.
And could we, could we just expand a little bit on lead certifications? And and the green building, and where would that fall in the process? Is that, would it enter in as early enough as design selection process? And and who has sort of good experience with that? Or or does that come later?
That will be decided during this phase of the project as well. MSBA offers two additional percentage points for reimbursement if you meet twenty percent above the energy code. And that's part of either the lead lead point system or the mass high performance schools certified program.
And I apologize for not knowing. Were we able to secure lead certification for the gallon?
Yes, we did.
Great. Thank you.
Mike?
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, the fifty percent for eligible project costs being covered, is that consistent with the ratio we had with Galvin?
Um, I think it is maybe fractions of a point lower than what we had for Gavin at the time.
Okay. And the second question is, forgive me if you covered it and I just missed it. You talked about some project costs would not be eligible for the matching. What are some of the more significant potential costs in projects like this that you've experienced that would fit into that category?
MSBA has a cap on construction costs, so any cost per square foot over three hundred and thirty three dollars per square foot is a hundred percent on the town to pay. They also have a cap on site development costs. Their cap is eight percent of the construction costs. So anything above that eight percent of the construction cost is a hundred percent on the town. So those are the two bigger ones. There are a lot of other things that are categorically ineligible, such as swimming pools, for say. I know some high schools have swimming pools, but MSBA won't pay for them.
Would be the furniture and equipment and technology. They capped that at twenty-four hundred dollars per student. And so anything above that will be a hundred percent on the town. And, and, you know, one of the other big ones that we often look at during the study. If you're looking at a renovation or renovation addition project. Any swing spacer modulars are categorically ineligible. So if you need to bring in, you know, modular classrooms temporarily during construction, MSBA will not partake in any reimbursement in that.
So as an example, let's, so let's assume for argument's sake that the new high school is built on what is the current Walsh Field. And obviously, we need to know the baseball field because Walsh Field will no longer be available. Are building a new baseball field wherever it might go, is that part of the eligible cost or not?
If it's part of the eight percent.
Yeah.
Part of the eight percent. Yeah. So it is, it is one of those things that fits in the eight percent. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. One is I had heard from in some other community that, 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 I don't know if it's the MSBA has like. Already agreed, like plans that you can like. Say, I want plan A and it like accelerates the whole process because there's like three flavors. Is that something like, first of all, is that even true? And second of all, is that something that only kind of works for certain situations and probably not ours? I'm just kind of interested in if, if that's even something Wakefield will consider.
They have a model school program and you have to decide whether or not you want to enter into it. Before you complete the preferred schematic report phase of the project. If anyone's interested in looking at it now, you can see the available schools on the MSBA website, so you can take a look at them. I've had two communities in the past that have looked at it. For the most part. They have decided against going after it for various reasons. Sometimes when you're building on an existing site or right next to an existing school, you can't fit one of the module. Model schools on there. And then another instance where we had proceeded all the way through to the preferred schematic report with. With a certain designer and when we started looking at the model school, you can't continue with the designer that you have. You have to, you have to go with the designer of the model school. That's the whole point of they've built it before. And, you know, they have that, that, you know, lessons learned experience. So from that perspective, both of the communities that I explored the model school program with decided not to go. Go into the model school program. However, it does save about a year's worth of time because the designs really are already done.
Got it. And that seems to me that that would.
That is something that we included in the designer request for services that we will, we will look at any. Model school that might be, might be suitable for Wakefield.
Okay.
It's going to be part of their service.
Okay, great. And I would imagine that that's the, the working groups with the PVC's kind of decision as to whether that is something that we look at, so. And then my second question was around the feasibility studies that we, that Wakefield did back in two thousand sixteen and possibly. Even a couple of years before that, I know that there's, there's been a couple of feasibility studies that have been done. And the reality in Wakefield is we don't have a lot of options, right? There's not a lot of land hanging around that we can build a new school on, and so our options are relatively limited. Is the expectation that. That we will be able to leverage some of that work that's already been done on the feasibility studies? Knowing that obviously things have changed over the last, since the last time one was done. But do we believe that any of that work will be. Will help accelerate the schedule or the, the deliverables that need to be done?
Well, I believe the Night Bang Anderson feasibility study was mostly existing conditions. So I think that we will be able to use their report when, when the new designer comes on and brings their consultants in to kind of look at existing conditions. We'll be able to use it, but we'll, we will be able to, we will be required to do it again based on MSBA's requirements. Same with the Doran Whittier feasibility study, which looked more at the design program and space summary program. You know, based on what, how you would like the school to look, theirs went a little bit deeper into that. I think that it's all good information and I, and I know that any designer coming on. Will, will use that as a basis to move forward with. But again, we'll have to repeat the process. We may be able to go a little faster through the process because you've done this before. But we'll still have to repeat it for MSBA and make the submissions required for them because. Essentially, when you went through the other two feasibility studies, MSBA wasn't involved.
Right. That's what I thought. It's nice to know that it, those will be at least referenced and looked at as kind of a starting point, knowing that we've got it. We've still got to kind of do all of the work to complete them. The final comment I would just make before I ask for any other questions is fellow committee members. Stonem is about a year ahead of us on this, in this process. And I just recently kind of went to their website and looked at, they've recently chosen their plan that they're going to go with and. I believe that their school is going to cost something like a hundred and ninety or a hundred and eighty million dollars. Of which the MSBA is only paying something like seventy or eighty because they're doing a whole lot of kind of additional things. But it was very eye opening to go look at their plan. And, and just see kind of what they're doing, the architecture. So I would encourage the committee to just go take a look at that because it starts your, your brain going on, on what, what this is going to look like for us. And where we'll be a year from now, because it is, they're looking to go to town, their town meeting this fall for funding. And they've already chosen kind of their options, so. Any other questions from committee members or comments? All right. Doug, anything else from you on this?
No, I want to thank Leftfield for being here.
Yeah.
I think we're going to be, I think that they're going to be regular presenters here for our school committee group. As we move through this, but thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have one more item before I go back up to the top two comments and updates. We have, excuse me, the proposed new updated service animal policy. And so this is just a, an updated animals in school policy. And it's basically an amended policy, the one we had in place. So you'll see, I submitted a copy of that, which I think Judy made part of the packet. And we're proposing that this evening that we're putting it on the table. To be voted on in our next school committee meeting in June.
So Doug, I, I do have a question about this because Tom asked the clarifying question of. Comfort slash therapy dog versus service dog. So our service animal, excuse me. The language in the policy refers to service animals. And so I'm trying to get clarity around. Is what we're referring to in this policy Sammy, the new dog at the Galvin? Or is it because it refers to service dog, not therapy dog? And I don't know if we need to make that distinction or not.
Yeah, no, you'll see an asterisk in the, in the new policy. And it makes reference to police dogs, right, or law enforcement dogs. It's the exception to the, to the animals in school and there's an asterisk. So that asterisk refers to, so this dog would be a member of the Wakefield Police Force, right? So it's covered under that language.
Okay, so the, all of the language about service dogs is not about Sammy.
So the, so the service dog, so I, I don't know if you would like language added for it to say not service dog, but. Therapy dog or a therapy dog slash service dog, whatever edits that you feel like we need to make, we can certainly do that. But, but in either distinction, this is a, the police would say that this is a member of the Wakefield. Police and it's a law enforcement animal, right? So it's assigned to an SRO and it's protected under, under that category. For all policies in public schools that are cited from the Mass Association of School Committees.
Okay. I think we may want to think about amending it to be slightly clearer, just on the distinction that we made. But, but we can take that up with the subcommittee and, and then when we, so we'll be reviewing this policy to vote on it. Two weeks from today or at our next meeting.
Yep. So what we would do is if we're going to amend, so we're putting it on the table to do exactly what you're suggesting, Suzy. So it's. Back that anyone might have for this policy. And that based on that feedback, we can make the decision as a committee to add. Or edit any of the language in the policy, right? And then we would, and then we would vote in our June meeting.
Okay. So I think we need to make a motion and then have discussion.
Can I ask you a question?
I don't know. I don't know if we need to make the motion first to lay it on the table.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Why don't, why don't we do that? Tom, are we okay with doing that?
Yes, sure. So I moved the school committee laying on the table for two weeks. For two weeks at consideration, updated policy number one, one, zero, seven, animals in schools as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, Judy?
Discuss.
Oh crap, discussion. Sorry. Mike Boudreaux, discussion, yeah.
So, so Doug, the, just the way it looks in the document, I'm looking at the exception asterisk. It looks like it's a subset of poisonous animals, though I think it's probably a formatting issue there. It's indented. It looks like the exception only applies to poisonous animals on the second page.
It says exception, exception guide hearing and other service dogs or alert dogs.
But it's, it's indented, so it almost looks like it's a subset of poisonous animals.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you? Or it should be the same level as the other paragraphs, I guess. Just FYI.
It's a formatting thing, Doug.
Yes, that's all, that's all. Yep. Just wanted to point that out. That was it. Sorry.
Thank you, Michael.
Tom?
So I have a, 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 a process question for either Suzy or Doug. And if we need to amend the motion, perhaps we should. If not, then that's fine too. I'm comfortable with the way. But my assumption is we're laying it on the table, but at the same time asking the policy subcommittee to review it. In the next couple of weeks for purposes of bringing back recommendations? Or has the policy subcommittee already reviewed this?
So we, we've shared the document with the policy subcommittee. And we've taken feedback and made edits to the document so far, right? But, but if you remember, correct me if I'm off, but in our last round of policies that we put on the table. We made edits, for example, to our mask policy back in the fall. And then we changed it and then we voted two weeks later. So would this be different than that?
Well, not necessarily. I, I'm, I'm just asking, is, is there, is the policy subcommittee sort of got its, its eyes and hands on this? And, and because the types of things that I think Suzy and Mike and I would even have some thoughts. Would we be amending this on the floor as a group of seven? Or is policy going to sort of take into consideration some of the feedback that even we've provided tonight? And then bring a revision back? I'm fine either way. It's, it just may make, I guess, my two cents, my preference would be to have policy. Have a meeting between now and our next meeting and, and put another set of eyes on it for. Consideration of exactly the type of things that have come up tonight. And I, and I, while I'm talking, I couldn't agree more with the creating a distinction around service animal. And then comfort animal and therapy animal, which candidly is why I raised the question earlier tonight, because those are different things. And also if this is to be considered, this animal is to be considered. And I don't disagree, but it to be considered a member of the police force. Ie, having, you know, being a part, a, a part of a police, you know, presence in the school. It is not like a, it shouldn't be, I think, under the same rules as like a drugs sniffing dog. If, if we were to have other have the occasion to have the police enter one of our buildings. In a true law enforcement capacity versus the, you know, appropriate SRO capacity. That's an entirely different set of rules now fall into play with the police presence in that regard. So I, I guess I'm asking that subcommittee get its, get its, get some thinking around this. I think it's a great idea that we have this. I just want to make sure that we're, that we're touching all of the, all of the parts of, of the animal policy.
And we are scheduled to meet Mr. Markham on Wednesday, next Wednesday at four o'clock. So can certainly take any of the feedback that the members are providing tonight and incorporate it to make changes in two weeks.
That would be great.
So having said that, I don't necessarily see a need to amend the motion if the policy subcommittee will be taking it up anyways.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, now we're going to do roll, roll call vote.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Doug, you, you're going up to the top of your agenda?
I am, I am. I'm going to close with just comments and updates. I'd, I'd like to just start off by letting the committee know and the community know. That we had a public records request under the Freedom of Information Act. From, from a community member to be provided the survey data that came from the Warrior Logo Survey. And, and so after consulting with town council, John Mullin, we were informed that this is a public records request under the law. And that the law protects, is, is different for adults than it is for students. Student information is protected under the student records law, but information that's produced publicly by adults. Is subject to the public records requests under Freedom of Information. So that we were required to provide the information or the, the data that was created from the Warrior Logo. Service information. And this happened after the survey was administered, right? And, and I make this distinction because in the survey, it said that this information would not be shared with the public, right? But, but that was incorrect. That's incorrect information. We genuinely thought that we had the protections. Under student records and we were, we were mistaken, okay? And, and so we share this information with one community member and we just want people to know that, right? We want to just keep people informed and, and because we had made this distinction on the survey. You know, we apologize that this mistake was made and we just want to assure everyone. That this mistake will, will not happen again. And we will be very clear in any surveys that we put together for, for budget. For student services, for any surveys that we do by adults. Are the adult surveys, the adult feedback is subject to public records law that needs to be provided publicly if requested. So that's, that's just where we're at. I'd just like to keep everyone informed on that. Any questions on that before I move on? Amy?
Amy.
I have a question. So on that survey, I was one of the people that took the survey. So I noticed that it had asked for name and address and email and possibly phone number. I forget. Is that something that's typically on surveys or why was that put on this survey if it was supposed to be a confidential survey?
Yeah, I, I think what the, the, the subcommittee had talked about was just as a way. To, to check that there was a connection to Wakefield. And that it wasn't, the survey wasn't populated by someone else that didn't have a connection to Wakefield. And so, you know, and, and other information that students had participated in the past. You know, we've gotten, students have created surveys and we've gotten people that, that chime in and participate. From other parts of the country that don't have a connection to our town. So I think that that was the intent.
And then as far as, so I know student names weren't shared on that because they're minors. Was any of their other information shared or?
Not, not because they were minors, but because their information is protected under the law. There's a difference, right?
Okay.
And so all of, all of their. And so all of all of their information was redacted.
So everything, their address, their everything. Okay. So maybe we take this as a learning experience and going forward is maybe something that, you know. Do you live in Wakefield? Yes or no? And we kind of have to take it with a grain of salt and hope that the information that we're getting is. Is what we are looking for. Um, I've had quite a few people that have have shown concern to me about this. Um, and myself having taken this and encouraging others to take the survey as well, it was a little disheartening that that was something that had happened. Um, so I think we definitely need to take this, you know, in going forward, we're gonna have to make sure we're doing the right thing. Um, for the community to make sure that we have that trust in them, because people aren't gonna wanna do surveys if they are. Or they're not gonna be as honest as they might have been had they um had the full understanding of potentially their information being shared.
Yeah, I would I would kind of add on to that. I think our ability to not ask for any information and. Obviously, we have to trust that it's not a person from Seattle, Washington replying to the survey, you know. The hope is that most of them are being honest about that they live in Wakefield or something. That might be a way of solving the problem. Once again, it's not gonna be exact. And it obviously wasn't binding anyway, so but we we learned. We make mistakes, we learn.
Tom, did you want to say something?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay, I I saw you come off of mute, so I wasn't sure.
Oh.
Um, you know, I I think for me that the reality is that um any a- any data that people fill out. Around for town for in general can be um asked, requested under this Freedom of Information Act, right? And um, I I think the intent, the intent certainly was never to share that that information. Um, I don't think we've had a Freedom of Information Act request. I don't think in the time that I've been on the school committee for the last two years, so it's not something that happens kind of often. Um, and I think with the with the logo survey, I think if everybody was being honest. Um, I think there was concern on both sides of if we didn't ask a person's name and address. How many people were gonna fill it out multiple times? How, you know, how would you know that? How would you know that they're from Wakefield and tied to the community? So I think i- in the trying to to keep everybody kind of above board on a on a topic that was incredibly. Um, emotional. We put that in there with the best intent of just being able to to say like, Amy Wall, did you only fill this out once, right? Like, we we wanna know that you only filled it out once. Um, and and that came that came back to bite us, right? We we made a mistake. Um, there was never an intent to share that information. Um, we wouldn't have just shared it if somebody asked for it. We said it was confidential. We believed it was confidential. Um, it only to find out that it was not. Um, and and that is um. It I I, like you said, Amy and Doug, like this has been a learning experience. We will have learned from it. It is unfortunate. Um, and i- it's more than unfortunate, right? We it it probably should not have happened. Um, and um. But here we are, and and we certainly, you know, all of us know that that we've gotten some concerned emails about this topic, and so we felt like it was time to just talk about it. And admit that, hey, we didn't handle this quite right, and we're gonna learn from it. Um. Any other comments on that? Okay, Doug, anything else?
Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate it. Um, so just an update. We had student vaccinations last Wednesday. Um, for students that are twelve and over. Really, really pleased um that we were able to offer this in our community. We had two hundred and and thirty-seven students participate in in vaccines. Um, there is going to be a follow-up on on Wednesday, June ninth. Um, at at the field house, there'll be more information forthcoming on that um in the coming days. Um, Tom Walsh is setting up um uh an emergency kind of services. Tabletop activity, which is like a a live scenario around a crisis situation and people work through it real time. So school leaders, police, fire are going to be getting together on June eighth, and so there'll be more information forthcoming on that. Um, we are collaborating with our crisis team that we meet with weekly to talk about, you know, COVID data and all that's going on there. Um, you know, the the chief of of fire is there. He's he's kind of scheduling drills to complete the year, so that's very positive. Other information, just COVID data update, very, very positive, trending in the downward direction. Last week, we had. Two positive cases. This week so far, we have one positive case with thirty-four students in quarantine. So, you know, things are really um trending in the in the right direction. I'm really. Pleased about how it looks like we're gonna be able to end the school year in Wakefield. Um, you know, the the better, the the closer we get to the the reality that we left, the more the easier it's going to be for us to open in the fall. We also need to give space um and understand that that some parents and students are still. I'm going to be more comfortable wearing masks and kind of maintaining social distance. So, you know, so those those things are still going to be in play, um and we have to work through that. They're still, we're still wearing masks in school. And we're still socially distant as feasible, you know, as kids move throughout their day, so please. Um, please know that, and there'll be more information forthcoming on that. Um, we also met earlier today um to talk about our summer programming. And we will give an update to the school committee and the community on our summer programming and in our June meeting, in our first June meeting. We also had a meeting today to collaborate with the Boys and Girls Club um to work with them on academic programming. I think we're gonna be do a pilot with them, possibly. We're still working on it in the summer with Wakefield Academy. Um, it's going to be standing up an enrichment and academic support program. Um, that's gonna serve um students, I think, very thoughtfully. I think it's gonna be better than um a any program we've ever created in the past. And I think it's timely because it's going to address the needs of students. Um, as they prepare to come back to school in the fall. So that's that's where we're at. Um, that concludes my. Comments and updates. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Steven?
Steven, yep.
Um, Doug, just in terms of the the summer programming and and how that's gonna come along and how we're into, you know. Um, we're taking advantage of the Boys and Girls Club, you know, willingness to help. Um, I have seen communication coming up from Academy, sort of offering dates and times and and what their availability is. I haven't seen anything personally necessarily from district. I don't know if I have, I missed it or not, but what I am seeing. Is parents already talking about things like summer camps and they take their late to the game, like everybody is booking up their schedule. When do we think we're gonna be prepared to like to to sort of share out? You know, what that's gonna look like so that, because I'm just afraid we're gonna have a bunch of parents feel like, oh, my goodness, I already. I got my kids booked for July, August, you know, so, yeah, so when we think we can share that data?
Yeah. So I I think I heard you say, Stephen, correct me if I'm off, but I heard you say that Wakefield Academy information's already come out.
I've seen a couple of, um, we will not be taking part of it, so I have not gone a deep dive, but I do know that they've said. We have programming, come register.
Yeah. And so um Wa- Wakefield Academy is us, right?
Yeah.
So not separate from us.
Yeah.
Um, so if information's coming from them, it's it's us, right? And so we'll be summarizing what we're offering is really what we'll be doing in the next meeting.
Okay.
It will be an update of Wakefield Academy. It will be an update around special education um offerings. Um, and it will also be an update if if we're able to stand up a pilot with the Boys and Girls Club. Carrie, did you want to add anything? I know you un- unmuted.
Um, I just unmuted just to to add a little um information around the timing. So we we will have a component of the academy program that will be um. It's really a a focused academic um program that will be free of charge and offered to um some of our elementary students. Um, we have some targeted um grade bands and subject areas. Um, so we we've been using. Some of our recent data and getting teacher recommendations to help. Um, identify some students who we think would benefit from the the academic support program over the summer. Um, so it's just taken us a little bit. Um, we really wanted to have all the information possible to narrow down um groups. Um, like I said, it is going to be a free offering. We love um to expand it as much as possible. Um, but we think we're probably going to be able to serve a little over a hundred elementary students through the program. And we're um hoping to finalize lists and potentially get information out to parents by the end of this week or early next week. Um, but I hear you on summer schedules are booking up fast, and we're feeling that pressure. Um, so we're trying to trying to move as as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And apologies for not recognizing Academy as part of District.
No worries.
My apologies.
No, please, no worries. Amy?
So Kara, just to ask, just to bridge, I assume we would call that group um. Intervention Services, like, because it is a bit confusing, because you have extended school year, which is one thing, and then you have a.
Yes.
So people get lost in the language, and sometimes summer school is actually extended school year, but. So what you're saying is we might be able to service a hundred kids in intervention, right? Which is different than. If those.
Yeah, yeah.
If some of those parents that you approach say, you know what, our schedule's full, we'll pass, do you have a a B list? Do you know what I mean? Like, we could just get, you know what I mean, get our.
Absolutely.
Service as many kids as we can.
That that's the goal for sure, and so we did narrow down um to certain grade levels. So we've decided to target our incoming um incoming two, incoming three, incoming four, incoming five. Um, grade levels, because we really just were trying to narrow the focus and um use both um, you know, industry assessments as well as we. Put information out to classroom teachers to make recommendations as well. It is an intervention type uh model. It's not necessarily students who are below grade level or um, you know, in process of a special ed referral, which is students that we felt could you could use a boost academically. And that there may have been, um, you know, the 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 um choppiness of the schedule might have impacted their growth in certain areas. So we we're ideally trying to structure it with um about, you know, cohorts of about fifteen to eighteen per grade level. With a a lead teacher and then some assistants as well, targeting ELA math and science. And what we're doing, once we've narrowed down the the students, we're we're going to um, you know, set up the classroom structure. Obviously, make it fun, engaging, trying to, you know, as as much as possible to to keep the students engaged. And then we're also going to do some front-loaded planning with our curriculum coordinators um to be able to really um, you know, look at. If we're going to continue learning in the summer, what are some, you know, key concepts or um things that we've been to different lesson plans throughout the summer? So that's our goal. So it's. I hesitate to use the word intervention, um, because, you know, we're really trying to make it more of. A continuous learning opportunity that's really focused on specific skills um that are really ne- uh necessary per grade level, um mainly in ELA and math.
And it's it's, there's no cost to it, right?
It would be free. So for the for that, so that's where we're really trying to be, you know, have our criteria tight and um make sure that we. Um, you know, who know who our students are, because it would be a free off offering um to students who are available. And and your question about a B list, absolutely. We want to fill the cohorts. We want to make sure that um. We can serve as many students as possible. We're thinking we're at about like the one twenty range right now, if everyone accepts. Um, but if not, well, you know, we'll definitely try to fill those spots. And we kind of anticipate that some families might be maybe in for two weeks, out for one, and that's okay. Well, we'll make it flexible like that with it being summer.
You know, some, like recently at the Gavon, there was one parent got a call that their child was recommended for the MCAS. So when that parent shares it to six other parents, they're all like, why didn't our kid get invited? So I just, I didn't know if you could send out some information, just as like, we'll be contacting you and and maybe maybe a paragraph why. So we're not all like, why did they get picked? And why did we get picked? My kids.
I know. Yes, absolutely. Um, so we'll we'll try to include that. We're hoping um we had a a target for ourselves to try to um narrow down. Um, student groups this week and then get parent letters ideally out on Friday. So that's that's our target. Um, if if that feels too rushed after we have a meeting on Thursday, Tuesday might be the latest that we get um parent notification out.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Good good feedback, Amy. Thank you. That's it for me, Suzie.
All right, Christine, budget items.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep it brief, I promise. Just two items under business. We're so fortunate. We have two gifts to be accepted tonight by school committee. One gift is from the Wakefield Track Boosters Club to support stipends for assistant coaches for indoor and outdoor track. And another gift for uh for the Wakefield, uh for the Woodville School Library from the Woodville PTO. If we have a motion to accept, Tom?
We do. I move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of three thousand five hundred dollars from the Wakefield Track Booster Club. These would be stipends for four assistant coaches for the twenty twenty-one indoor and outdoor season.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, uh, discussion? See none? Judy, roll call?
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Budrow?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Also, I move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of one thousand eight hundred dollars from the Woodville School PTO. For the Woodville School Library.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, uh, discussion? Amy?
I I just have a question. I'm curious selfishly, because we might be purchasing books at the Walton. Can, so the PTO can't purchase the books themselves, or is, does it make it their asset and not the library asset? Is that why we're moving the money?
Right, and and they make the donation to the school, so the school can determine which part we put purchased. We have received gifts of books in the past, but this, this is for the library to determine what but books to be purchased.
But PTOs can purchase books and then donate them too. Is that okay to do or no?
It is a gift, yes.
Gift. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Markham, you have a question as well?
Uh, no, I was just gonna offer offer a commentary around that, because I, Amy, that's a terrific terrific question. When I was in uh involved in the Greenwood PTO, we sort of had the very same questions. As one of the things that comes to mind is the um. The capacity or responsibility really of who's purchasing the books. Um, in that if the gift of of money comes to the school district or to the library, then. It's assured that the librarians and the teachers are coordinating the books that they want to support the curriculum. Versus, and I say this as a former PTO active member, versus moms and dads deciding what books should be bought. Um, so I really think that's that's a helpful um way to give to give the money to uh the schools and let the um. Let the educators sort of pick the books. I'm sure a a a quality working PTO relationship, right? The PTO is not gonna buy books that the school doesn't want in the first place, so it's probably a. You know, apples and apples, you know, probably a moot uh matter, but I think that's that's the distinction that rings in my head when. When we talked about this back in my Greenwood days.
Stephen?
I I can speak a little directly to say it sort of came out of um expedience speak. And just if it did happen sort of um from a a parent-directed thing, it seemed like a will be done in the past as it would have trickled in. Um, whereas there was a list of, there was a thoughtful discussion that's gone on on a couple of different levels with. Um, the Woodville Media Specialist, Ms. Sperrano, and what had come out of that was that there is an existing list going back a number of years. Um, in an effort to sort of uh work through the stacks on things like diversity through both sort of race, religion, um abilities. Um, and just to sort of just. Build out that collection. It was a standing list. There were some things that were added to it, and then this just seemed to be sort of the easiest way, so. When you're thinking about the Walton School, and I know some other schools are thinking about it, it is sort of nice to have a discussion about what's working easiest for. You know, for the books to get in the hands of the students um in the in the best way.
Thank you.
Judy, roll call?
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Budrow?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And our next item under business, and I don't know if you, if any of you have noticed, we've had a. Deteriorating school bus in the back faculty parking lot. I know Suzie's noticed it quite a few times. And with all uh our attempts, it is no longer viable as a as a school bus. It will not pass, Will's Will's cracking up. It won't pass inspection, so we have to go through a motion to. Um, approve to have the town auction it off. We've had some inquiries about it, about um private people wishing to purchase it, but. Because we are a government agency, we must vote to auction it off to the highest bidder. Um, other districts have done this um to the tune of a couple thousand dollars, but it served us well. It's from two thousand eight. But it's no longer viable, so it does have a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it. But it's no longer viable. So it does have a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it. And it's been put out to retirement. So if we have a motion to, to, um, auction off the school bus, that would be greatly appreciated.
I think Will has an eye on it, by the way. It's just something.
I move that the school committee approve the auction by the town of Wakefield for the two thousand eight Thomas Special Education School Bus as presented.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, um, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Judy?
Ms. Vare?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for me tonight.
Okay, so we're going to move on to, um, subcommittee reports. Um, I will give the finance and facilities. We met last Thursday morning. Um, Bob, uh, surely gave us an update on, uh, the vaccinations um, that had happened the day before. Um, he gave us an update on some air quality testing that has, has I think had started that day and was planned for the next couple of days, kind of working their way through the schools. Um, we talked a little bit about the senior events and the fact that the facilities team is, is focused on, um, kind of supporting all the, the graduation events that are planned. Um, and then we spent some time talking about, as we do every time we meet, um, all of the uh, state level and federal funding that's, that is, uh, has come in or is planned and kind of just continuing to touch base on uh, what's happening with that, um, and, uh, what, what kind of discussion is going, continues to go on. There isn't a ton to report on that because when there is, Christine will give more of an update, but we do always kind of check in on that topic of, um, how are things going there? Christine talked about, um, you know, the continued work that they're, that they're doing to kind of close out the year um, and to spend down accounts and, um, and that was really, I think that's the, the crux of the things that we talked about. Um, we are scheduled to meet next Thursday. Which would be, I think, like June third. Um, Tom, any, uh, updates on labor and personnel?
We have had one, uh, labor subcommittee since the last school committee meeting, during which, uh, we discussed and shared, uh, issues, uh, and matters that came up with the, uh, with the labor relations meeting, uh, with the WEA leadership of a couple of weeks prior. And we've, uh, shared and summarized those conversations, um, uh, strategically um, and, uh, on all matters with the full school committee.
Okay, uh, Mr. Boudreau, update on student services?
Yep, we had our first meeting last Wednesday. It was more of an introductory meeting. Uh, Rosie Galvin joined us too, so that was great having her on the call. Um, Doug spent a little time going through the evolution of the student services group, which has only been around for, I guess coming up on, I guess it's three years now. In that regard, um, uh, you know, obviously Amy Purcell and Darcy were great assets, but Amy and Amy are formidable forces and I expect, uh, we'll get a lot accomplished. Um, we talked about what sort of topics they might be interested in, recurring special topics. So uh, they're gonna, Amy and Amy are gonna provide sort of their wish list. I have a wish list. And we'll kind of put it together and see, try to get a game plan. What's realistic? What can we hope to accomplish during the course of this year? So great first meeting. Thank you all for participating.
Great, thanks. Um, Kevin, update on, uh, policy and communications?
Yeah, we had our first meeting on Wednesday afternoon, May nineteenth. And so Mr. Ingles, uh, Ms. Lehman, and we're joined by Superintendent Lyons and Assistant Superintendent Morrow. Um, kind of just to introduce ourselves, uh, to each other, because we have and talked a little bit about kind of the things that we're spent the bulk of our time talking about the policy that we've, um, proposed about today, policy on animals at schools. You know, kind of talked about some different things that had come up. It's be read over what we had had, some questions that we had had, and then Mr. uh, Mr. Lyons went back and, and, and continued the draft, um, in consultation with their comp. Also talked a little bit about communications. Um, that's a newer part to the subcommittee that wasn't a part when I was on it last. And I know, um, our chair has asked us to kind of think critically about different options to improve communication to school, but general Wakefield communities as well through various outlets. Decided to have a conversation, brainstorm around some of the best ways to communicate, um, what we're doing, some of the accomplishments of the school district, et cetera. Um, and then lastly, just with some new business, Mr. Lyons, uh, was talking a little bit about the MASC and the possibility of having them host our policy book. And I know it's something we had explored in the past and I can move and explore a little bit more. Um, just for context, when I was on the committee, the policy book was a three ring binder, like one of those really big ones. It was really hard to, to move the pages. So like subsequent committees have done an amazing job already. I, I just based on what's online. So I'm, we had a big part of that, um, in Susan back in the day. Uh, but certainly there's some, it could be advantageous to think about in the S hosting, um, our site. And so we're going to start to explore um, the pros and cons of that, um, as well. We're scheduled to meet again, um, as I had referenced earlier, next Wednesday at four o'clock.
Perfect. Um, so future dates and agenda items, we are scheduled to meet on June eighth. Um, we will be, uh, talking about summer services and some of the things that we were just chatting about. There will be, there will be kind of more of a, a formal update. Um, I think we're also scheduled to have an update on the Native American curriculum work that has been going on, um, as part of our resolution. Um, related to, to, um, taking another look and kind of improving the, the way that we educate our, our students on our Native American history. Um, I think we're also going to be recognizing retirees maybe at that meeting. Um, and so if, um, we'll, we'll be working towards a, a full agenda for that meeting. Um, I think we, we need to figure out whether we're going to have a late June meeting or not. Um, that the, the next June meeting would be after the, um, after school ends. And so typically in the past, we have not had, held a meeting um, on that week. Um, so the current plan is not to have a meeting that week. Um, I did share with you all the, the summer dates that we're going to have meetings, which I don't have in front of me. Otherwise I would read those off. Um, so I think we're on to school committee comments. Um, I'm just going to start with people in the blocks. Amy Wall, if you don't mind going first?
Sure. Um, I just had one quick question. Um, I was approached by somebody from WEF um, asking about our, for their calendar, about our meeting schedules for the next, uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two. So I don't know if that's something that's already out and I just missed it, or if that's something, um, that's being worked on. So if we could get that and I would be happy to share that with them, or if that's another process that you folks do already.
So Judy and I can take that. Typically, we do, we do sit down and kind of look at that just to make sure that it doesn't fall over any holidays or, you know, kind of just, we can take a look at that and get that together.
Okay.
Um, Judy, you and I can connect on that. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight.
Uh, Steven?
Sure. Um, I, I did have a question about, um, the Safe Streets sort of initiative, the, some of the traffic stuff that we've heard with, with youth council and some of the, the recent meetings we've been a part of. Do, is there a, a game plan that we could find out about, like a, a ball that's in motion? Because I think verbally I've heard some parents wanting to like paint over some of the crosswalks around the Woodville High School area and like anecdote, like they wouldn't really do it, but they're, they get frustrated. Um, so there are people that would like to know that, you know, when we get back to school in the fall, that, that we've looked at this and that we're actually doing something. Um, so I'm wondering if, if we can talk about that at some point. Doesn't have to be next meeting, could be the subsequent one. I just, are there any actionable items? Um, aside from that, um, I would just mention there was a fourth grade teacher, uh, basketball game at the Galvin, um, for the Woodville students. Uh, they occupied two courts. One court, uh, the teachers won sixty-one to forty-one. On the other court, um, the students won, uh, forty-five to thirty. So that was awesome. Um, and then in terms of, um, my HRC liaison, there are just a couple of dates that are coming up in June. It's, uh, June's Pride Month. They'll be, um, raising a flag on June first at the Americal, um, at about six PM. Um, I don't know how many people, you know, would be in attendance. I know we're trying to keep numbers down, but just, uh, be aware of that. And then also there will be a flag raising, uh, celebrating Juneteenth on, um, June fourteenth, also at six PM. Uh, that flag will, um, will be up for about seven days, um, before it gets turned back over to the pride flag. Um, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Steven. Um, Amy Lehman?
Hi, just have one comment. Um, I actually met with a parent today and, and towards the ends of our conversation, I shared that we would meet the um, comfort dog. I was trying to bump up viewership. I thought she would meet the dog. But as we were talking through it, we were both very excited for our kids who we know like dogs, but we won't get our kids a dog. We thought maybe, um, like an after school program, be like a puppy play date or something could run through. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up when Officer Kelly was here, but just planting that seed now would be a great benefit for some kids. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Markham?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so a couple of quick things. Uh, one, it, um, I wanted to, uh, uh, thank the, uh, the superintendent, um, and Ms. Wall and you, uh, uh, Susie, Madam Chair for the candor and the, um, in the appropriate comments around the, um, uh, around the survey, uh, results and how the, the sharing of the information, the confidential, that what we perceived to be confidential information certainly came out. Um, I, I, there's nothing better than a candid, a conversation and honest disclosure. And, um, and I just want to thank you. I, I agree wholeheartedly with the words that, that the three of you, the three of you said. Uh, and this certainly, uh, needs to be among, among all things that have occurred in the last six months. Uh, whether it's about the logo or it's about any other things that we've been doing. We've had lots of, uh, lots of balls in the air and lots of matters before us, but the more open and, um, and, uh, and honorable we can continue to be. So I just wanted to thank the superintendent for bringing that up, raising that voluntarily. And I also wanted to acknowledge my complete agreement with Amy and Susie's comments with regard to that. Uh, secondly, uh, correct me if I'm, uh, wrong. I was honestly paying a little more attention to the class of twenty twenty. Having a daughter in that class, but I believe this is our last meeting prior to graduation. So I just, uh, wanted to congratulate the members of the class of twenty twenty-one. Uh, wish them nothing but the best. Have a wonderful graduation day, a wonderful, safe and fun and, uh, and memorable senior week. We heard some great things from the students at the beginning of the meeting about what's going to happen uh, that week and we want nothing, uh, but the best as we continue to return to normal. Um, but it's a very exciting time. I know lots of, uh, lots of, uh, parents and families are celebrating in a new and different way, just as we did last year for the class of twenty twenty. But and anyways, just a huge congratulations to the members of the class of twenty twenty-one, to the students, their families. And of course to the, to the, to the teachers and the staff who have worked now for, well, for twelve or thirteen years with these group of kids. Uh, bringing them to this pretty important day. So anyways, thanks and congratulations to everyone.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, part one, I'm gonna echo what Tom just said. You know, if you asked all of us six months ago, you know, we would probably think this is senior class would have nothing this year, absolutely nothing. The year before, at least I got senior shows in and things of that sort. And look where we've come. You know, we have the car parade on Tuesday, Wednesday, we have the, um, uh, what's going on? Oh, the prom. Nobody thought we were gonna have a prom and now we're gonna have a prom. I modified, but it will again, interesting to see how it goes. Then we have the senior night carnival celebration on Thursday night. Um, we have honor senior. We're doing that again this year. Uh, everybody should be tuned to graduation to hear Susie Vares' big speech at graduation. I'm sure she's working on that already. Did they tell you about that, Susie? Or is that a surprise?
No, it's not a surprise, but it's not. I don't get to stand up there Saturday morning. I get to get recorded tomorrow morning and it's, uh, it's, it's a recording, but I, I am prepared. I have, I have a small, a small statement to make.
We're all looking forward to hear that. But, you know, kudos to the administration, Amy and others that have, you know, we've come so far. No one thought we'd be able to do, pull off what we're going to be able to pull off this year. So that's great. And the second thing is just a little follow up to when Danielle Collins spoke to us. I guess it was the last meeting. Um, so I connected her up with Maureen Miller, who, who runs the operations at the Wakefield Food Pantry. And we had a call today and it was, it was an amazing conversation. There are so many ways both groups can help each other out. We're, it was a quick call. We're gonna get in, meet in person on the seventh. Danielle's gonna get a tour of the Wakefield Food Pantry. I think there's a lot of tremendous collaboration potential there. So more to come on that front as well. That's it.
Kevin?
Uh, no, Mel said, thank you.
And I was going to just talk about the class of twenty twenty-one. So I think, um, Mr. Markham and Mr. Boudreau uh, kind of said everything that needed to be said there. I think, you know, to Mike, I would echo the fact that, um, these kids are going to be able to get really a, a, almost a, a normal, um, a graduation is just a gift. Um, and I, I'm super excited to be a part of a bunch of the things that are going on next week. Um, actually, there is one more thing that, just one more thing that I'm going to be part of next week, which is, um, the dedication of the, I gotta say it right, the Blatts Park Burnett Field. So the Burnett Field is going to be dedicated on Monday, uh, on Memorial Day at ten AM. Um, and, uh, so I'm, I'm going to be there for, for that. And I, um, I think Julie, uh, Smith-Galvin is going to be there. Um, and the girls are going to be playing, um, ball in the field and I'm looking forward to being a part of that, um, that kind of special event. I'm hoping that Amy Purcell is, is going to be able to be there. She's been invited as well. Um, so I will, I will close with that. Uh, Tom, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do, yes. Um, I move the school committee adjourned its meeting of Tuesday, May twenty-five, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Judy?
Ms. Vare?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
All right. Good night, guys. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.